Okay, we'll call to order the special committee of the whole meeting. It's a joint meeting between the Batavia Public Library Board and the City Council. If the library board would like to call their meeting to order and roll call, we'll let you go first.
Thank you. We, I will call our meeting to order and Mary Ann, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Palada, here. Deitchman, here. Ford?
Okay.
Thank you.
So you have your quorum. And now if we could get a roll call, Jenny?
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chancet? Soffa?
Here.
Wool?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uwe?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And vocal singer?
Here.
We have thirteen out of fourteen.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move right on then to item number two, which is a presentation, City of Batavia and the Batavia Public Library Board, strategic priorities. Laura and George?
Laura goes first. Yes, so I lost the coin toss and so I'll be going first this evening, but I would like to welcome the members of our library board here tonight. The city council asked that we put together meetings with the other taxing bodies to share our own strategic priorities with you and then have the opportunity also to hear your strategic priorities so that both were informed of the different projects that we're both engaged in, what are our most important projects are that are coming up in the near term future and then also perhaps find ways that we can support one another in accomplishing those tasks and coordination of effort. So I'll begin by sharing our most recent quarterly update for the city's strategic plan. Our most recent strategic plan is for the period 2021 to 2023. And so I will share my screen. So the city's strategic plan focuses on five distinct areas. The first is economic vitality, the second is transportation, third, infrastructure, fourth, the river, and then finally diversity, equity, and inclusion. One of the things that I'll say about our strategic plan is it certainly is an evolving process. When I first came to the city, we did have a strategic plan that was a five-year strategic plan, I think, and it had not very specific goals, a lot of kind of aspirational types of things and the current two strategic plans that we have done since I've been here have laid out some very specific things that we wanted to accomplish within three-year periods of time. Our first strategic plan was for the years 2019 to 2021 and then some big thing, things happened that really kind of threw a wrench in the first plan. The very first thing that happened at the beginning of 2018 was the closing of Sam's Club, which we had a significant amount of retail revenue that was generated from the Sam's Club and it did cause us to pause to determine how that was going to affect the plans that we had for future investments and then of course the global pandemic came as well. And so during the year 2020, we kind of regrouped and came up with the current strategic plan with these five areas of concentration. But as we'll go through this plan and an update on where are we currently stand with relation to accomplishing our objectives, you know, you learn things as you go along where you find that perhaps some categories overlap or one project that seemed to fall into a specific area addresses things in others. So with that, I'll move on to, the first area is economic vitality and our very first objective in this area was to hire what we were calling a business development manager, but who we hired Shannon Jarmis, she's actually our economic development manager is what we eventually decided to call that. And we wanted to create an economic development strategic plan that expresses the city's policies and expectations for future development and redevelopment. Thus far, we've been able to hold three stakeholder meetings. One was with the Chamber of Commerce, another with Main Street, and then a third group was with a cross-section of individuals from throughout the community. George attended, I thank you very much for attending that third meeting. School district, park district, we had downtown property owners, business owners, people from our industrial park, people from businesses on Randall Road, just very broad spectrum of individuals, residents who'd lived here for a long time, residents who were very new to our community to collect information about currently the strengths and weaknesses of our community and the types of external opportunities. of our community and the types of external opportunities and threats that would affect us as we pursue objectives in an economic development strategic plan. And now that we have collected this information, we will summarize it and bring it back to City Council to use that in the development of objectives that will allow us to, you know, capitalize on the strengths of our community, to avail ourselves of those opportunities that are out there, or protect, you know, use the strengths to protect us against the threats that exist. And then likewise, our weaknesses we need to guard against the ways that those might hold us back from opportunities, and the ways in which those might exacerbate the threats that are out there. And that's the way that we'll develop objectives, similar to the way that we did for this strategic plan. The second is to actively market Batavia to new businesses, and I'm so glad that we have the position of communications manager and the economic development manager have been working very closely with one another to find ways to promote businesses in our community. And the communications manager that we have on board now was very quick to establish relationships with other organizations to be able to collaborate on publicizing Batavia as a really exciting place to do business. And I think you see that all the time with all of the new businesses that are popping up both in the downtown, you know, being able to make the transition from the boardwalk shops to occupying vacant retail spaces in our downtown, but then also these new businesses that are popping up on, in the Randall Road corridor as well. A lot of vacant spaces out there are being filled. And then to promote opportunities for downtown redevelopment, the city this year put out a request for proposal for four downtown properties that we own, the two former Larson Becker sites on the east and west side of North River Street, the former First Baptist Church site, I guess some call it the One Washington Place Project site. And then also the current location of the boardwalk shops, which was previously known as the Art Stop parking lot. And so we put an RFP out, and we did receive a response from, from a developer, and, but also another thing that we are working on is we've hired a consultant, Housiel Levine, very well-known planning consulting organization, and they are going to help us with creating a downtown plan that will articulate the vision that the city council has for land uses for, throughout the downtown area. This is also a really important thing to do to communicate to the development community so that, you know, they don't waste time bringing things that would not be appealing to the city council. So articulating that vision is a very important element in our future economic development for our downtown. And then continuing to implement aspects of the streetscape plan. In May of this year, as you know, we have several TIF districts, and one of the things that TIF funds can be used for is investment in infrastructure and streetscape. And so one of the things that council suggested could, those funds could be used for is putting catenary lights above on North River Street, which has been, you know, a goal of ours, those kind of Edison lights on strings is what catenary lights are. And also we've, we have the project of, we will have two new entryway signs here in the city of Batavia this year, I promise you. One at the north side of 31 and one at the, the south side of 31 at the west side cemetery. So we're really looking forward to those additions. And our strategic plan, you can always find these quarterly updates online, and more specific information is provided, but I, when I do the presentation, I don't want people to have to, you know, read six-point types. So our next area is with regard to transportation, and we are very excited to provide you news that we just got last week about the road diet for Route 31. You know, when I started, a road diet would have been a hard no from Area 1 for Illinois Department of Transportation, but they have seen the success of these in other areas, taking a four-lane road and turning it into a three-lane road with bidirectional traffic on the outside and a turn lane in the middle that both, you know, it just provides a safer lane width for the comfort both of motor vehicles and also the comfort for pedestrians and bicyclists to cross that roadway. And so we are very excited that we have heard back from IDOT that they have accepted our consultants' conclusion that this is feasible for Route 31, and they have given us the green light to proceed with Phase 1 engineering. And in Phase 1 engineering, you know, there'll be several designs which will be proposed and the opportunity for the public to have input in the process in the design of this road. So we'll be, you know, providing ample opportunity for, you know, people who want to participate in that discussion to attend those meetings in the near future. It would be expected that the next phase of engineering would be completed in 2023, and that we would schedule this for actual construction probably in 2024. It's just the, sort of the timing of how those things go. We wish that they moved faster, but talking about additional sharrows and bike lanes, you will see in a future slide that another element of our transportation plan is the development of an active transportation plan. And it's expected that the recommendations from that plan will include identifying roadways where additional sharrows and bike lanes should be located to improve the bikability and walkability of our city. Thus far, there's been a tremendous amount of community engagement to collect information and data, and we are now at the point where our consultants are finalizing their recommendations. And so I believe very soon, within a month or so, those recommendations should be coming back to council for their consideration, and we want to have that plan come for approval to City Council before the end of this year. And so the next area is infrastructure. One of the things that we were able to accomplish last year was to put our, a large number of future infrastructure projects into prioritization timeline, those things that we wanted to accomplish next year, within two to five years or more than five years, and to begin to identify funding sources. One of the things that we looked at was that TIF 1 will be expiring at the end of 2024, and that there are infrastructure projects that are within that TIF that it would be good to be able to accomplish. I think one of the major ones is riverbank stabilization. The riverbank stabilization, we've done one section, which is located just south of the Wilson Street Bridge on the west side, so sort of between Wilson Street and where the wastewater treatment plant begins. And I'd, you know, anybody take a look at that. It is both functional and it's very beautiful as well, you know, to put in the horizontal rock and the natural plantings and to prevent erosion, and yet it's something that is very pleasing, is would be a very good investment for us. And then again, as I said, sometimes these, these things overlap, and we did find that a lot of things in our infrastructure and our transportation objectives did overlap, enhancing the safety of bikers and walkers in our neighborhood through traffic calming, we expect also to be an element of the active transportation plan. And then the river, we, as, as everyone knows, we have been collaborating with the Park District on a master plan for the Batavia section of the Fox River corridor. We've taken a pause for the Park District has hired the consultant to do a bit of a side project to say that if we remove the dam, but there was some type of impoundment put into the river on that side, say some kayak run or whatever, what types of amenities would there be possible if that was the plan for that side of the river? And so we expect that that study will be concluded in September, and that later in September or October, the two parties will come back together to meet, to try to come to a consensus on what the future plan is for removal of the dam and preservation of the depot pond. We also have heard recently that the US Army Corps of Engineers is resuming a study that is for ten of the low-head dams along the Fox River to study what the ecological effect of removing those dams would be. And ordinarily, those types of studies are undertaken in order to justify a funding source. So, you know, we're happy to see that that study resume because it may mean that there are other funding sources available to us should we decide to remove our dam. As for actively marketing our riverfront development opportunities, I spoke before about the RFPs that we have issued to try to promote redevelopments. And then we're always looking for ways to get our community to focus on the fact that we've got this wonderful river that is in the heart of our community. And so coming up on September 17th, the Friends of the Fox River are organizing a, it's our Fox River Day for River Cleanup in the City of Batavia. We'll be participating along with other Batavia organizations. And then the final area of our strategic plan is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we made our goal to develop a strategic plan for DEI. You know, as we approached that particular objective, approaching it for the community as a whole seemed to be a lot to bite off in the first initiative. And so we're starting with our own workplace, and we formed with our employees a workplace DEI group that's met several times this year, monthly since March, actually. And we have been selected to join a group that's organized by the Metropolitan Council of Mayor's DEI Steering Committee, the University of Illinois at Chicago's Great City Program, and the Illinois City Managers Association in a six-month pilot program that is going to teach us as a workforce how to operationalize DEI. And it's such a wonderful opportunity for us because we, our group is from every department with, within the city, very engaged, but none of us is an expert in DEI. So to be able to have the opportunity to participate in this program right when we are beginning our efforts is just such a unique and welcome opportunity. And so those are our current objectives and where they stand, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about those or any comments.
If you will, I'd like to just throw out some sidebar research that I've been doing about the future of Batavia and its land use. And there's no rhyme or reason for it, just out of my curiosity, but as most of you know, the Fermilab has just gotten a major funding increase to build the new accelerator out there, of which some of it won't be on Fermilab, it'll be deep in the ground and goes up to a mine in South Dakota. And so there, that probably would ensure that Fermilab will be part of Batavia for probably the next 50 years. This is, this is where, they came in 1966, so they already had their first 50 years, but it looks like we're going to have another 50 years. And they've been a great neighbor, and as many of you may have heard, this past year, I guess it was two years now, the International Electrical Engineers came in and gave Fermilab a phenomenal award that they now have mounted on the front door at the high-rise in which it proclaims that the technology necessary to create the MRI Medical Research Machine was done at Fermilab. And if you think of all the things that have been done in the world to enhance our lifestyle and protect us, that was certainly one of the best things that's ever been put on the street as far as that goes. So Fermilab really has a lot of people wanting to know what they're doing out there. We have huge amounts of foreign interest in what's going on at Fermilab, so much so that we have to watch our computer systems in Batavia because there's all kinds of people trying to break into Fermilab's computer systems all the time. And so when they hit the firewalls that surround that one, they come over to the city of Batavia thinking that somehow or another they can get themselves into ours, and they can't, but that's what's going on. But I mean, I say that only because it's all good stuff, and Fermilab really has set a stage for themselves. You have to appreciate that Fermilab, as it sits there, is 6,800 acres, that for all intent purposes is off the development rolls. There's going to be no houses built on, no need to educate children, or there won't be any taxes coming off of it. So that's on the east side. Now, a very interesting thing has happened on the west side. Starting under the Kane County leadership of the late Phil Elstrom, Phil decided that there was some prime land west of Batavia, and that he thought it should be protected and utilized for public purposes. And the first thing that, one of the things he did was go out and buy the Nelson's Lake Marsh, I guess I would call it, and it was a mixture of various land uses, of which none of it was really buildable, but if you go out on Nelson's Lake Road now, there's a park there, and you can go down and walk around the reserve. Well, what most folks are not aware of is, is that Phil started, and other county boards continued on after his death. And I finally got around to asking the Kane County Department of Land Planning, how much land have you bought out west of Batavia that will never be built on? And they said, well, the idea here is to probably create the largest forest preserve in Kane County. So as an example, they went out rather recently, and they bought the Jungles Farm, which is north of Main Street to the west of Wenhamath Road, and it goes all the way up to the Mill Creek subdivision, 331 acres. It's yet to be developed, but it's back there off of Main Street. Then they went west of Main Street at Nelson's Lake, and they really want the town out there. And so I said to them, how much land have we bought out west of Batavia? And Ken Anderson, who runs this, says, I'll have to figure that out and get back to you. Well, he got back to me, and the number he gave me was 1,361 acres that they've bought west of Batavia that's totally off the development rolls. And basically, if you go to the intersection of Nelson's Lake Road and Main Street, anything south of that intersection or west of that intersection, if there's not a house sitting on it, there never will be another house sitting on it because they've bought it. And they've even gone to the extreme that there are several farms down CV Road and others where they've bought the farm, but they're allowing the farmer to continue to live on the property and own it until the generation that's there now wants to retire, and then the county will take that area over. So we are going to be, future generations of this town are going to have the largest forest preserve in Kane County right to our west. And there certainly is absolutely nothing wrong with that. I mean, the one thing that it does do, and I, George and I have had several conversations about, you know, the Batavia Library District boundaries and where they go and where they don't go. And I don't know, I think some of this would go into some of your boundary area, does it not?
Some of it, going back even into the 90s, already is in our district, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, it's like, I've shared this with my friends at the school district, and they say, you know, I said, you don't have to worry, there's never going to be any more kids coming at you from this area. And I don't know if they like that or not. Nobody quite gave me an answer, but I mean, it's a, it's a very unique moment for Batavia because we've got that land there. And I've had people in my car that I'm driving around showing Batavia, and they get out there, you know, near Main and Nelson's Lake, oh, look at all this land here. Boy, this is going to be a beautiful part addition to your community. You have no problem developing and selling this. Well, I'm thinking, nope, it ain't going to happen because the county's already bought it. So, and then you add on the Batavia Park just So, and then you add on the Batavia Park District's addition at Clark Park out there at almost Main and Fabian. And I was there just this afternoon. They had a groundbreaking for the new intersection that's going to be put in at Main and Fabian, Main Street and Fabian Parkway that'll then go south from Main Street and connect up to Bliss Road. And they'll be taking down the traffic signal that's to the west of that now that goes down, I'll call it Old Bliss Road. That's going to be abandoned, and they're going to make Fabian a straight shot through Main Street, and it'll go out and connect into Bliss Road. I don't know, maybe a mile south of Main Street is where it'll come in there. So there's some major changes taking place that will, you know, really kind of change things around a little bit. But I just wanted to share that with the other governmental bodies that we've got these major land uses that have now been put into place, and they've been kind of quietly done, specifically the county board's acquisition of all this land west of Batavia that, you know, not a lot of people are really aware of what that is and these deals that they've made with farmers out there that they can farm it for the next 20, 30 years, but when they get done, it goes to the county forest preserve, and that'll be added to it. So I think it presents a tremendous opportunity for some nice recreational, open land spaces out there. But there's a lot of it. I mean, that's the big thing. And I think that's the thing that Batavia has to take into their planning is that we won't be getting any tax dollars out of all that land. Thank you.
Well, all of that is privately owned. So with the exception of the property that's directly across the street from you, I think that that corner, that is city-owned property. But we expect that that has significant environmental cleanup that needs to be done. The city has talked to property owners in that area who have had, kind of been kicking the tires on some ideas about development. I think what's holding things back right now is just the state of the economy being so many unknowns. And then also the supply issues that are adding cost to mixed-use development type of properties. But I think that, you know, I'm hopeful that very soon that things will, will, you know, become a little bit better in that regard. And then I think that, you know, all I talked about in my presentation were the city-owned parcels. But there are a lot of privately-owned parcels about which we've had conversation as well.
Any other questions? If not, George, the floor's yours.
I'm pleased to introduce the president of the Board of Library Trustees, Daniel Russo, who will start our presentation.
And I will, I'll give a little bit of an overview of our world. But I want to thank Mayor Schelke, City Administrator Laura Newman, Alan Wolfe, and members of the City Council for the invitation to have this joint meeting. Whenever I have the opportunity to speak about the library, I like to include a quotation from Andrew Carnegie. He said, "A library outranks any one thing a community can do to benefit its people." Although he made this statement over 100 years ago, I believe it is even more true today. "The library provides information and services to people of all ages without regard to income, ethnicity, or sexual orientation." When we think of access, books may be our first thought. But access also includes computers, Wi-Fi hotspots, research databases, streaming video, and invigorating programs. Large print materials, audiobooks, home delivery, and online programs appeal to users with physical limitations and a variety of different learning styles. Access also includes the library of things, things that surprise and delight users. Did you know you can check out cake pans, a web camera, an old-school slide projector, musical instruments, and more? Of course, access is provided in both the physical building and the online virtual library. Through the library's website, users are connected to vast research and entertainment services any time of the day or night. It is important to highlight the professional librarians who provide the guidance we need to navigate today's overwhelming information landscape. As author Neil Gaiman said, "Google can bring you back 100,000 answers. A librarian can bring you back the right one." You will meet three of our librarians tonight. As trustees, we get to see and appreciate the dedicated creative work of our outstanding staff, the Library Foundation, and the Friends of the Library. All these people strive to provide thoroughly satisfying user experiences. David Lankis is a library scholar, teacher, and advocate. In recognizing the changing role of libraries, he tweeted, "Bad libraries build collections. Good libraries build services. Great libraries build communities." His observation shows that the public expects more of libraries. It is no longer enough to focus on just assembling a collection or providing services. Great libraries build communities. We believe Batavia Public Library is building community. The library is an essential partner in preserving and promoting Batavia's history. One Book One Batavia engages the entire city in reading and discussing a single work. Books Between Bytes taps into community experts who share their knowledge. The new Lyceum series explores interesting topics from art to pirates. Teen Inclusion Game Night invites special-needs youth to connect with others. The how-to community teaches you new skills. The community check-in with Misty and Amy introduces interesting people using Instagram and Facebook. And the library's physical space is more important than ever. Meeting rooms welcome students working on school projects, job seekers participating in Zoom interviews, and community groups pursuing their interests. When you enter the library building, you will see artists displaying their works and community projects such as winter coat or prom dress drop-off spots. You can also find a quiet place to study or relax and enjoy a coffee from the Flyleaf Bakery Cafe. Batavia Public Library has developed partnerships with the city, park district, school district, and local businesses. These partnerships enhance our community and demonstrate that tax dollars are being used effectively. In normal years, before the pandemic, the library regularly recorded over 250,000 visits each year. The library is thrilled to attract so many visitors to our downtown, and we look forward to building an even stronger community. Our next speaker is George Sheets, Director of the Library.
Thank you, Daniel. I will mention that in the goodie bags that everyone has either gotten or will get, there is a cookie from the Flyleaf Bakery Cafe, so enjoy. I will begin by expressing the library's appreciation to the city of Batavia for the support of the library's digitization and conservation projects. If you're interested in Batavia's history, then I encourage you to visit bataviahistory.org. Just a wealth of great local information there. In recent years, we have filmed and digitized three decades of the Batavia Herald, the 40s, 50s, and 60s, 10 years of the Batavia Republican, and over 10,000 pages of the Windmill Merchant, Windmill News, and Windmill Herald. This fiscal year, we hope to film and digitize Batavia's telephone directories as far back as 1912 and the Batavia Herald for the 1930s. So as we continue to add a wealth of resources that most folks don't have easy access to for local history research, house histories, genealogy, and just an interest in our beautiful community. As for the library's strategic priorities, we don't have quite as nice a plan as the city has. So thank you, thank you for that great information, Laura. The library is more or less at the end of its current cycle of strategic objectives. We followed our last formal community survey and traditional strategic plan from 2014 with a highly successful Speak Up Community Engagement Initiative, which was launched in 2017 as a different approach to long-range planning. This resulted in a series of recommendations which the Board of Library Trustees adopted in June 2018 as an update to and expansion of the library's 2014 strategic plan. Over the course of the past four years, we have focused on the Speak Up Recommendations, which included the successful referendum in November 2018. In particular, we have focused on Speak Up Recommendation 3-2, which was, or is, to maintain the community's investment in the library's building and site by systematically planning to address long-term maintenance needs. And the referendum has certainly helped us accomplish much of what we've done the last few years. We are now involved in the early stages of a long-overdue, exciting remodeling project to refresh the interior of the building, which is now 20 years old, and respond to the ever-changing service and technology needs of the community, which will serve the Batavia community for the next 10-plus years. While architect selection was delayed by the pandemic, like almost everything we experienced, the early design phases of the remodeling project are now underway. We anticipate developing a new strategic plan in the next few years. Now, it is my distinct pleasure and privilege to introduce to you three of the library's public service managers, Stacy Peterson, Joanne Zilman, and Stephanie DeYoung, who will draw your attention to the value of a library card and the library's lesser-known collections and services. First up is Stephanie DeYoung, the Library's Circulation Services Manager, who may ask, what's in your wallet? The correct answer, of course, is a library card.
Thank you, George. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. All right, so as George mentioned, I am the circulation manager at the Batavia Public Library. Circulation is the department that checked out over 450,000 items last year. We also registered, renewed, and replaced over 6,000 library cards. The gateway to all of the wonderful materials and services you'll be hearing about tonight is your library card. You may be delighted to hear that nearly 60% of residents within the library district have their library card. And for those residents who don't have a library card, getting one is free and easy. Simply stop by the checkout desk with a photo ID and a recent document with your current address. In this day and age, there's an app for everything. The SWAN mobile app is one of our favorite things to promote to patrons. This app is a wonderful tool for helping patrons to manage their library cards from their phone. So you may be asking, what is SWAN? System Wide Automated Network, or SWAN, is a library consortium of 100 libraries that share a catalog, meaning patrons have access to materials from those 100 libraries. You can use the app to search the catalog and place holds on those materials for pickup at Batavia. The app can also be used to place holds on eBooks and other e-content from the Batavia Public Library. So if you're ever in the store and you see a book or a DVD and you wonder, I wonder if the library has that, you can use the SWAN Libraries app to scan the barcode on the back of the item and place the hold right then and there. So you can put that back out of your shopping cart and take a trip to the library. The app also allows you to manage your account. This includes making adjustments to your holds, viewing your checkouts, renewing your checkouts, and much more. My favorite thing about the library app is that you will never forget your library card at home because you have a digital version of your library card on your phone that can be used to scan at the self-checkout machine or at the checkout desk. Another really cool feature about the app is linking library cards. If your family chooses, you can link your library cards, allowing you to manage all the library materials your family is enjoying. So I would like to introduce Joanne Zilman, the deputy director and Youth Services Manager, who will talk more about what the library has to offer for your family.
Thank you, Stephanie, and good evening. Thanks for this opportunity to share just a few words about services to children at the Batavia Public Library. Stephanie mentioned your library card. It's the gateway to amazing collections and services at the Batavia Public Library. In Youth Services, this incredible gateway opens the door for all children, for all children, birth through eighth grade. For our youngest patron, this starts the first time that child is brought to the library by their parents. Library staff love welcoming and introducing new parents to everything the library has to offer, starting with, yes, baby's first library card. While they're not placing those holds at the, using their app, they are invited to come into the library with their parents. And every time they visit the library, they get a little stamp on their library card. And after four stamps, that child goes home with their brand-new board book to start their own in-home collection. New parents also receive a Born to Read bag when they come to the library in those early years, in those early times. The bag is filled with board books and early literacy information that encourages parents to develop the habit of reading aloud to their children every day from birth. Parents appreciate the generosity of individual donors and grants that make Born to Read possible for us to distribute to all Batavia families. And another program, 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. This program assists parents in continuing that reading habit and serves as a gateway to reading success for young children in school when they get to kindergarten and beyond.
Joanne, can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
That young man there is Oliver Vergara, and he is the son of city employee Alex Vergara. And so I just wanted to recognize that it's one of our...
And Oliver was just in recently, completed his 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, and for completing that, received that book that he got to take and add to his collection. So he is very proud of that accomplishment before kindergarten.
Thanks, Joanne, sorry.
Sure, no problem. Love to hear those little stories. So library cards. Library cards open those doors to reading and learning, but they also open the doors to programs, all types of programs for all children of all ages, from Storytime at the Caboose this summer to Big Woods Bingo at Big Woods Park several times this summer. We had crafts at Anxton Park. We've had performers, presenters, played games in the Reading Garden. We have scavenger hunts in the library. And we've already released our second Monarch Butterfly today. We said we released one last week, and our second one was today. All of those things are available for children to come and enjoy when they come to the library. This summer, children also were invited to participate in more than 80 library programs and events for children. In our first picture, those young people stuck to it, creating water bottle holders and sit-uh-pons with duct tape. It was a pretty sticky day. The children also investigated and dissected parts of a plant in a plant, in a planting class this summer. They used their engineering skills to work together to build logal structures and designed a carrying device to protect an egg when dropped from one of the city of Batavia's bucket trucks. We are very fortunate to have a city of Batavia bucket truck come on a rainy day and drop 40 eggs multiple times at different heights. The last one, quite a bit higher than this one. one. They also read to cats and dogs this summer, and they also learned a new style of handwriting at calligraphy camp. You may be wondering, are children really still reading books? Wonder no more. With more than 900 children participating in Summer Reading Club 2022, library cards were heavily used this summer. Children read thousands and thousands of books and logged over 33,000 days of reading in Batavia. What were they reading? One of our newest collections arrived just in time for summer vacation. Wonder Books have audio and print bound together for easy reading. This Go Anywhere package is great for when children want to be more independent readers or when they want to take reading with them. Another collection launched this year and available with your library card are Discovery Kits. These boxed kits are grab-and-go fun, that offer children hands-on experiences in engineering, programming logic, backyard science, and more. It's not unusual to hear families discussing which kit they're going to take out this week, or if they should take one they've had already, like the Earthquakes, because they love watching all the pieces fall apart, or should they take out a new one and find something new. And while you may think that the Youth Services Department isn't just for children, you might be surprised to hear that library cardholders of all ages can check out the museum adventure passes from the Youth Services desk. Passes offer discounts at 24 museums and entertainment venues in the Chicagoland area. Some of our most popular are some of the passes you're seeing here, but this is only a small amount. Brookfield Zoo is often checked out, Cantini, Chicago Botanic Garden, the Fire Museum in Aurora, many, many museums that you can enjoy with your library card. There's also discounts at 51 Illinois and Southeastern Wisconsin destinations that you can access from home with your library card via Explore More Illinois. A link to Explore More Illinois is available through the library website and can direct you to these museums, and some of our discounts and other offerings at them. Well, while I could talk about library services for children probably all night, I am happy to turn this over to Stacy Peterson, our Adult Services Manager, to talk to you about library services for adults. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Peterson. Joanne mentioned that the library is a place of discovery, and one of the things you're not going to hear me talk about, except I'm about to sneak it in, is the tens of thousands of books that sit on the library shelves and the other physical materials, the hundreds of programs we offer every year, and so forth. A couple of years ago, a neighbor found out I worked at the library and said, oh, I didn't know we needed libraries anymore. And the person who knows me best said, uh-oh, because he knew what was about to happen, which was that I didn't get upset, I got informative. And he heard, he heard a whole lot about the library. So I'm going to give you the brief synopsis tonight, but I'm focusing on some of the lesser-known services that the library has to offer. So the library is not only a place of discovery, but it's also a place that can help you solve problems, and it's a place that can open up new opportunities. So as I go through these next few items, I'll invite you to think about whether each one solves a problem, opens up an opportunity, or perhaps does both. So first off, we have a ukulele and a metal detector, which don't appear to have anything in common, except that both are available at your Batavia Public Library for checkout. Also, earlier Daniel mentioned cake pans. There are 100 of them sitting just mere blocks from here, waiting to be checked out. We have dinosaurs, we have Elmo, we have a butterfly, we have trains, we have springform, we have all the specialty pans you can imagine on earth. We also have a webcam you can check out if you need to do a job interview from home. If you're going for a bike ride on our beautiful trail, you might want to check out a bike lock if you're going to be gone for a while. Also, a collapsible wagon, if you're going to be going to the farmer's market, you might want to pop this thing in your trunk and take it with you for your haul. And finally, Wi-Fi hotspots. This isn't finally, we actually have a lot more in the library of things. Go to our website and you'll find out all of them, or come and visit us, we'll show you the shelves. But Wi-Fi hotspots, these are available, and were absolutely invaluable during the pandemic. For those who don't have the internet at home, these provide internet access. They're also wonderful if you're off on the go, they'll give you Wi-Fi access wherever you are in a vehicle that is moving down the road. One of the newest services we have available at the library is 3D printing, and these are just a couple of projects. The one on the right, we printed just last week, it's a pen holder. And on the left, I don't know if you can tell, but that's a very young person's hand who's operating that really cool fidget octopus that we printed that is really fun to play with because it wiggles in a really great way. So with your Batavia library card, you can just go on the library website, let us know if you'd like to print, and we will print it off for you. Technology coaching is one of the really important services that the library provides. For anyone with a Batavia library card, you can sign up for a one-on-one technology coaching session. You can learn how to use that new iPad that your children gave you, and you don't know what to do with it, and don't even know why you have it. We'll give you all kinds of reasons. One of the most rewarding types of session is working on applying for jobs. These days, any place you're going to apply for a job, including the most entry-level positions, require an online application, and none of us were born knowing that. So the library is a safe and pleasant way where you can learn those skills. We have had multiple people, and one person I'm thinking of in particular, came in, did a technology coaching session to learn how to apply for jobs online, and then came in for several days, for weeks afterwards, he was applying for jobs. One day he came in, huge smile, and said, you're not going to be seeing me quite as often because Monday I start my new job. So it's those moments that we live for. There are moments that we get a little bit choked up because of the difference that we can make in people's lives. One of the popular services that some people know about, like if you know, you know, and a lot of people know, that one of the easiest places to get a document notarized in town is the library. In fact, if it's an evening or a weekend, probably the only place you can get a document notarized in town is the library. We get a lot of referrals from other organizations. If you're coming in on an evening or weekend, just give us a call to make sure that the notary is there, available at the time that you plan to come in, and we'll be glad to help out with any kind of document you might need to have notarized. And it's free of charge. Home delivery. If you're unable to visit the library due to health reasons, the library will come to you. Just give us a call. There are other ways that you can use the library from home. We have dozens of research databases. One of the most popular is the Consumer Reports database. To get into that content from home as an individual, you have to pay a subscription fee. The library has paid that subscription fee for everyone in the community. And with your Batavia library card, you can just go through the library website and look up appliance reviews, do side-by-side comparisons online, find the best buys, all from the comfort of your home. One of the other popular categories of databases are our genealogy databases, which get an enormous amount of use. We also offer genealogy one-on-one sessions for people getting started or who need help to get past a brick wall that they run into. In this picture, I'm just wondering what these two women in the tree are talking about because clearly something just happened that our classes will not help you with, or our databases, but that we will help you fill out that tree. When the genealogy folks are at the library doing research, it's a good thing that we have Flyleaf Bakery Cafe as a library amenity, because often, they're there all day. I can't believe the staying power of genealogy researchers, literally, over eight hours, they will be there. And fortunately, there is wonderful food and beverage right at hand at the library One of the questions we still get is, so does the library have eBooks? And the answer is, oh, yes, do we ever. The library offers over 1.3 million titles, and that's across eBooks, downloadable audiobooks, and streaming video. There are four different services the library offers you for free, just with your Batavia library card. So indeed, you can take the library with you wherever you go. One of the most surprising stories I ever heard was this one. I was at the reference desk, lady came in, and she said, I just want to thank the library for offering eBooks. Last week, we went on a cruise, we were in the middle of the ocean, and I finished all my books, which made me kind of go into a panic, because that's a bad scene. And she said, but, the library came to the rescue, I connected to the ship's Wi-Fi and downloaded eBooks from the Batavia Public Library in the middle of the ocean. And again, it's one of those moments where you just feel so good. So not only does the library help solve problems and open opportunities, but it also fills a unique need. The Declaration of Independence mentions three unalienable rights, and I'm going to ask for your help with this one. Life, liberty, and--
Pursuit of--
The pursuit of happiness. The library is one of the few institutions that is custom-made to serve citizens in your pursuit of happiness. Whether you're expanding your life, exploring your interests, expanding your knowledge, or fulfilling your potential, we invite you to visit the Batavia Public Library as you pursue your happiness. Thank you.
Thank you. You've just seen an example of why Batavia has the best library in the Fox River Valley.
Mm-hmm, you're here.
It's not the books, it's not the library of things, it's the people. And we're very proud of our library, so that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I think it's interesting, I don't know what I want to do, but get the metal detector or go 3D print something.
I know. The possibilities are limitless.
Two things I didn't know, both of which I think could get me in trouble. Which might be good. Okay. Well, it's good to know all the things we learned tonight, at least I learned a lot of stuff, but I never didn't know.
I'd just like to share a story. Stacy opened my eyes to a resource that was available at the library, and, you know, as you know, the city has been pursuing business registration because we don't know a lot about our business community and wanted, you know, to be able to reach out and, for instance, if we wanted to reach a particular type of business, or if we wanted to know how many retail establishments we have that are, let's say, 5,000 square feet or more, you know, how would we answer such a question? And I was speaking to that about the Chamber of Commerce, and she said, did you know that there's this huge database available to us through the public library that's called Data Axel? And I contacted Stacy about it, and she sent it to me, and I am just amazed at the information. It's like all the information that's available in Dun &amp; Bradstreet. It doesn't maybe, you know, drill down to what is the CEO's, you know, personal phone number on his desk and his email address, but except for that, it gives a tremendous amount of information about the businesses within our community. So it's just one of those examples where I'm so glad that we're able to have this meeting, because there are so many different ways that just through conversation, we find that we can help each other out. And I think one of the things that I hear from maybe consultants who come in to work with several of us, whether it be the library, the park district, or the school district, part of what makes Batavia special is the way that all of these different organizations collaborate and work so well together with one another. So I think it's been really valuable to be able to hear from the library today, and I want to thank you all very much for your time in coming here to give this wonderful presentation.
Can I add something? I'm curious, and I'm an avid, avid library-- you won't believe this, but this morning, I was driving, finished a book on disc and returned it in the drive-through. Went for a walk this afternoon and have an audiobook on my phone. Got here earlier, was reading a Kindle book that I got out of the library. I have two books on my desk, hard books, so I use most of the services, but I thought I hit them all. I couldn't even believe the more stuff, like the Wi-Fi hotspot and stuff. How do you find, how should people learn all that, like cake pans? I've never done a cake pan. How do you learn all these things that are there?
The thing I say is, you can call us or visit and say, what am I missing? And then we will say, oh, what about this, this, this? You're already telling me about. But hearing all of the ways that you're using the resources, that's one of the great ways. Another way is if you go to the library website, there are, after you've got the copy, after the least one, they, and then suddenly you're finding out, like, library thing, what on earth is this? And then, oh my goodness, there's, now that all these things are available. But two minutes, you just, you know, kind of hold around there. Another way you can do it is if you don't want to know. You can pick up the right out, back to the reference desk, you can, you can go to the library, type it up. You, you, well, you get it started. I have to say, I only have five minutes.
I definitely feel more comfortable doing that now, because I see the passion through everyone there at the library, so.
Nothing we love more than that library.
Actually, we have a service called My Librarian. You can actually have your own librarian, so to speak, that will give you recommendations, and you can explain the kind of things you're interested in, and they'll provide personalized recommendations for reading, or viewing, or listening, and such. And one of my favorite things in the library of things is the bocce ball set. If you like to play bocce and don't own a set, check it out from the library when your family's having--
Are you targeting that? It's good to know.
I wasn't intentionally.
I welcome it.
And I totally forgot to mention, when I was thanking the city earlier, I did bring an example of a conservation project. On the easel right across from me is Batavia's oldest known extant newspaper, the Fox River Expositor. That's an issue from September of 1856, I believe.
Yes.
So take a look at how hard it is to read a paper, but that type is, I don't know that it is six-point type, but it's, that is the oldest known paper that the library acquired from a private collector, and with, we've had it conserved, and that front page will be, is a facsimile of the original, is actually in a safe storage place. We're going to hang that on public display as a piece of one of the earliest artifacts from Batavia's history, so.
I think it's interesting, because I joke all the time at work and other things that, you know, you learn something new every day. If you don't, you're not paying attention, and I think this is a perfect example of that, because I think a lot of us from the city here are sitting here thinking, wow, I didn't know the library did that, or had that, or, you know, the information that's there, I feel like that's something that we, as the city, should have shared on our website, or a link from our website, you know, just another way that somebody in the public might find that. Because like Nick said, you know, you just don't think, or most people, I don't think, that the library has those things available. And, you know, to be able to figure a way to get that out there and make the general population understand that, maybe that also raises the amount of people that have library cards and utilize the library on a more regular basis. So I think this is always good to have the other entities in town in these chambers and talk about the things that we're each doing or want to do, and be able to, you know, realize that, and I'm sure some of us will leave here and tell somebody else about what we learned tonight, and that's exactly what we want to do. So I think this has been a great meeting, and opened my eyes to a couple new things. Anybody else? If not, I will adjourn our meeting, or ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. Second?
Motion by Malley, second by Saron. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, no-- Okay, nobody's opposed? Good. And then, Ken, you can...
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming down.
Thank you.
I'm glad we had an off Tuesday that we can meet.